There we go. Alright, boom. It only took about thirty seconds to make it work. Sorry folks, but this is the best I got. I really don't want anybody to watch these ones, but essentially, it's coming to my terms, it's coming to my, uh, it's come to me. That there are at least like five people who are actually taking the time. How dare you folks waste such good intended time on, on my lengthy, never-ending rants of videos? Uh, how dare you? Um, thank you to the few. Um, not necessary. It's really meant for the legacy, but uh, by all means, if you get entertainment out of it, good for you. I mean, I don't know if it beats a Netflix documentary or, you know, something, but hey. If you want me in the flesh, here you go. Um, I, I don't see how this can be any more of a turn-off. I can't even tell the color of my own eyes. Um, there's just no color. I know the lights behind me, so it'll look bad up here, like there's a big shiny reflection on my head, but essentially, I mean, you'll be able to see me. It just doesn't look good at all. It looks terrible, so I'm, hopefully, these, these, these videos are a turn-off for, for most slash all of you. I've done meditation videos in the past. This is slightly different from my dynamic meditations, which are really wacky. Um, but, I mean, this is at least a certain starting point. Mentioned this in the last video or two. I've done a couple of these so far. Um, and I'm getting, getting into this specific, um, this specific formula, right? So this is a recording that I listen to and I'll, I'm guided through the meditation. I'm guided through the breathing and the breath work that I go through. And uh, it just helps to put the mind in the specific area that you want it to be in. Um, so I can bring up specific areas of my life that I keep dormant, that I don't think about. Bring those up, uh, and bring up the issues. Um, focus on where there's a block and then figure out a way to work around it, work through, work over it. Um, very spiritual, very God-driven sort of meditation here. Um, I've, I've felt this meditation way more than I have, um, dynamic. Although, the biggest difference is, this is forty minutes of constant breathing, of constant, consistent, um, focused breathing, right? Intense breathing. It's not as intense as dynamic. Dynamic is through the nose, where you're focusing on the out-breath, kind of like, um, fire and ice breathing. Um, but also irregular pattern, so no pattern. Right? There shouldn't be a pattern or a rhythm to the breathing in dynamic meditation. And this meditation's complete opposite. It's very rhythmic. It's two breaths in, so if you can see my other hands on my belly. Uh, you go into the belly, into the chest, and then you breathe out. And it's all mouth breathing. Um, I get a little bit more, um, tapped into my emotions, so to speak. I go a little bit deeper here with this style of meditation. Um, but I've also been more sober than in some of my earlier practices of meditation. Um, that's great because I did a little bit of both forms of meditation, or breath work. I don't like these words, meditation. Kinda clingy. Um, forms of breath work. Um, but quite honestly, I think it's because I just haven't, I, I, I haven't done dynamic in a while. And I haven't really, you know, things have gotten progressively more difficult. As you move on in life, it gets more difficult. Um, typically, typically. Um, so I, I, I don't know if I just didn't face the fears back when I was doing dynamic, or if I'm just, I've, I've had it up to a certain level, or I'm just at that point where I have to address certain issues. Um, let me grab a swig of this real quick. No advertisement, by the way. However, these are really, really cheap at the Amish salvage stores. Thirty cents, fifty cent. Anyway, um, hmm. Biggest issue is obvious. I struggle with homosexual thoughts, same-sex attraction. It is what it is. I have con, I have, um, termed myself a completely narcissist. Right? I'm, I'd rather be asexual. The Bible does not talk about, um, I suppose it may. Right? Asexual is essentially being attracted to yourself and being almost, um, um, income and, and come. Uh, you are sexually attracted to your own self. Like a narcissist would be just very prideful, egotistical, all very self-oriented, self-driven, self, self-annihilation, really. Um, turned on by your own self. Uh, whether it be personality, character, or just overall visual, right? Um, I, 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 now, I struggle immensely with, let's say, self-identity, self-esteem, self, um, worth, right? Um, so it's very ironic or dichotomizing? It's very, um, imbalanced to say self-image problems and be a narcissist, right? So pride and ego, pride doesn't really match up with, with self-identity crises, right? It's usually the opposite way around. Um, however, that's how, that's how messed up this this image problem is, this, this identity, this, this character that is right in front of you. Right? That's how messed up we are. Um, I have made it a, I have I have figured out a way to be morally, um, to be morally justified by God, um, to be attracted sexually to my own self-identity while also hating who I am. That one doesn't make controversy. Um, in, in the, let's just say, the Christian realm. I don't know what will. I gotta be honest. Um, it's been really triggering though, triggering me, um, recently. Um, I struggle with forming relationships, building up connections, building relationships, forming connections. Um, maintaining, uh, relationships, keeping them, and actually not just, you know, not responding, not getting back, not keeping relationship going, intimate, whatever. Um, not intimate. Um, but it's, it's, it's just, uh, difficult. Where am I going? Um, yeah, so this, the struggle nowadays is, is get, is, is getting to know people simply because, um, of this. The belief system, right, that we've set ourselves up in this matrix of a world that we have, where, um, in the Christian world, I'm specifically coming from the Christian aspect. I am man of God. I follow Jesus Christ to the best of my abilities. I repent as often as possible. Um, and I live for the service of others. Right? It's that simple, right? God, Jesus, repentance, forgiveness. I mean, these are, this third one's kind of wishy-washy, but service of others. It's really simple, right? Mind, body, spirit, everyone else. Soul serves everyone else. Um, and in the act of serving others, I have cut that entire, I've cut that entire piece off because the service that I want to provide directly, um, is, is is what's termed as an abomination to, in, in the biblical sense, right? So if I am, if I am called, or if I am attracted to the idea of leading leading the young generation, leading younger men, let's say, let's say above teenage years, above, once you're actually an adult, so we'll keep things, we'll keep things legal for now. Right? We'll keep things earthly legal, but Christianly or, or godly. Here we go. Um, I'm to lead a younger generation of men on how to break the barrier and break the mold, break the mental patterns of, of what it means or what it feels like, breaking the stigma of having self-image, self-doubt, self-worth, low self-value, um, problems by physical actual body stimulation through forms of exercise, meditation, massage therapy, uh, anger management, um, not management, anger expression, really, because I'm not here to down-regulate the emotions. I'm here to actually help people express the emotions. Emotion, you gotta express the emotion, right? Um, so yeah, if I have a purpose that is in alignment with helping young men attractive, apparently. Um, young men express themselves um, and help get over their, uh, trauma, right? Their, their emotional trauma. Um, and I, I'm trying to get away from the word, but I don't know how. I really don't, because you know, we all have trauma, but like emotional trauma wasn't a thing until kind of recently. Um, when we stopped being so physical with ourselves. When we stopped building things and we stopped going out into hunt, and when we stopped going out to actually physically do things to create the family homes that we have now, these wonderful, beautiful families that we've been creating for generations over the past fifty, fifty-so-odd years of glorious living. Um, thanks to our grandparents and great-greats. Um, we've, we've, we've we almost don't even have any more physical pain. This isn't to negate, of course, right? This is a very big audience. This isn't to negate those that are still going out and doing the physical, difficult thing. Um, most of us have it very cushy. Most of us have it very nice nowadays. So instead of physical pain in the body, um, that's not to, that's not to, uh, that's not to downgrade, um, um, long-term physical imbalances, right? Um, ailments over, you know, decades. We're talking about younger generations that have not done many, much physical, physical manual labor in their life. Um, raised in a less-than-physical lifestyle. And instead of, of building up physical trauma through injuries, through uh, physical difficulties, physical impingements, uh, things happen, right? I don't know how many concussions I've had. How many broken bones I've had. Um, but essentially, if you don't get physically traumatized, um, and this isn't to say, so big of an audience, I'm not even speaking to anybody right now. Um, this isn't to say that you, not everybody's doomed to trauma. Trauma to me is just sin, really. That's the, that's a real, and, and, and you can't, you can't get away from sin, right? Christians are just sin. Um, you can't get away from doing the wrong thing, and the wrong thing tends to be at times, uh, negating, cutting yourself off from emotional release. How you uh, respond to a crisis emotionally, whether you feel overwhelmed, happy, sad, angry, guilty, resentful, right? If you don't release those emotions, then they that actually scared the crap out of me. Now, if I don't say that, if I don't express my feeling of fear to that, and I don't breathe it out, it will manifest. It will manifest. It'll create physical ailments in the body. I don't know how else to express this in any other way. You will get short biceps. You can get, um, you can get food disorders. You can have joint pain. You can develop flat feet because you don't release your emotional trauma, folks. It's just the way it is. You don't believe me? I don't really care. I make these videos because I know that the information is pretty darn well accurate. Um, and if it's not, it's just entertainment. What you're about to see is gonna be entertaining to the kills. However, believe me when I tell you this, that emotional damage will develop physically inside the body, manifest itself and grow. Right? It gets worse over time. This is where, this is where obesity comes from. This is where back pain, never-ending back pain comes from. This is where um, a lot of common joint pain. It's, it's one thing to say, I, I was injured and then, you know, like, I, 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 I broke my ankle when I was a kid and now my knee hurts, and a little bit later, now my, now my hip hurts. Right? Those are kind of linked, and we can almost understand how those are linked. Um, it's another to say that you just don't move a lot in life. Therefore, you sat around for ten, twenty years and, you know, at a computer, doing computer work, so to speak. Um, right here, for twenty years. Uh, didn't do anything physical, yet you still come out with the same pains as someone who's been physically injured. Why is that? That has very little to do with emotional damage, I know. Um, but essentially, if your body is meant to be physically active, I'm a very active, I have a very active body. The energy in my body needs to get out. If I don't, I develop pain, anger, I develop emotion very quickly, unlike others that are not as fast. Those that develop, that have the energy and don't utilize it, the wounds develop faster, right? So if I were to have to sit at a desk for eight hours a day and do nothing, I will, I will absolutely go nuts. I will I have to start thinking faster and I'll need to do something, right? Um, and if I don't do something, not only is does, does tapping, does tapping, right, the normal jitter-tap that some people get at the desk? Is that not an obvious indicator that you need to do something? Um, but the constant thinking, the ADD, I don't like the disorder term, but the attention that goes elsewhere. If you don't have a notepad to write things down, there's just so much confusion. You don't get it out. You don't get this stuff out, the energy out, develops into chronic pain. Absolutely. Twenty minutes of video to get people to better understand how important it is to release emotional trauma. This is how I do it. This is the piece of how I do it. And in the future, when I do this for other people, and it looks to be very sexually stimulating, in which case it kind of is. Um, especially if you've been hiding from your sexuality for so many years. If you do these sorts of exercises, it brings up that energy. Now, I know that sexuality and sex and the conversation around sexual energy is very touchy, especially in the biblical sense. We wanna keep this very, um, much as a reason to please God. This is all for the glory of God, all to help everybody else. That's the problem. Um, for the glory of God and helping others sometimes get a little, a little hard to differentiate between. Um, so my version of glory of God for the past thirty-five years has been to completely negate, completely shut off, completely get rid of, turn off the sexual identity feelings or, um, impulses, right? Sexual identity impulses or urges that I might have and completely throw them away, completely throw them to the side. Don't look, don't think, don't act, right? Now, I'm, I'm, don't get me wrong, I'm not perfect. At all. I'm, I'm, I'm a very aroused, young, high testosterone-fueled man. No doubt about it, within, without a question of a doubt. I've got sexual energy and it's taken a lot of discipline, a lot of, uh, commitment, a lot of, um, what do you call it, where you, um, completely disregard the thoughts in your head. You almost become, uh, untethered, um, as, not a sociopath, like a sociopath, right? Um, annihilation, right? Where you just completely disregard, um, sexual thoughts. I don't completely disregard them. Where was I going? Shoot, I'm sorry. If I don't get this energy out, I'm gonna go nuts. I have extremely high testosterone, not extremely high, but I have an, I have an average, normal testosterone, I would think. I've never had my, uh, my test tested, never had my test tested. Um, yet I have urges like any other guy, right? I, I, I find it very difficult to remain celibate, very difficult to, um, keep from things like PMO, um, porn masturbation orgasm. Um, and to refrain from not looking. Um, I do well for myself. I gotta be honest. I've developed, I've, I've done well for myself, yet I also know that there's quite the energy, right? I can't just shut this stuff off. There's no chance that I can actually continue shutting off those urges and feel as if I'm living the purpose that God intended for me, right? Um, there's no way I can turn off that area of my body, brain. Um, and feel like I'm living life to the fullest. There's just no chance. Um, so when it comes to things like, ah, what is it called? Conversion therapy? Right? Conversion therapy or rehab within, um, sexual realm. Um, I can't tell you. Like, I, I, I'm, I'm pretty disciplined with, um, I'm pretty disciplined with my urges. I've messed up, don't get me wrong, but pretty well-disciplined nowadays. Um, and I'm very respectful to those that I do find, let's just say, physically attractive and, uh, and want to make sure that I refrain and control, uh, the energy rather than act out on it. Um, the problem is, a little bit of a problem here. Problem is, the more it's controlled, the more it's compressed, depressed, um, the less use you get out of it, right? It's like having a balloon and only blowing it up with like a little bit of air. Like, I don't know, that's a sh, it's a really crappy analogy. Um, it's like having a tool and not using it. It's like, what's the per, what's the point? What's the purpose? Um, this is a very big topic for me. I don't know how, how much I wanna get into. I could just keep going. There, I, I wanna get into the religious aspect of it, the Christian realm of it, because this is where I'm gonna find a lot of tension and a lot of, um, bashing. I'm not gonna find very much support in the Christian, um, realm when, when I, if I, when I choose to fully embrace and fully accept and fully express my sexuality. Because my sexual desires are not normal. Not necessarily, um, man and woman for me, quite yet at least. There's a lot to be said on this, folk. Um, I know what the Bible says. I really do. I get it. It's very simple. It's a very simple concept, quite honestly, for the heterosexual, for the straight, walking, uh, couples, right? It's not that difficult. I don't wanna say it's not difficult, like physically hard. Don't worry, there's plenty of discipline. There's definitely a lot of control there. Um, but how you build a family and the right way to do it isn't, it's, it's, it's very well-laid out in the Bible. It's very, it's obvious, right? Um, what about the rest of us? What about those that have different desires and wanna, um, uh, feel the, the need to express love in a different way? Um, to me, let's just go into it. To me, sex and love are two totally different things. They're two sides of the same coin. Um, and, and in a perfect world, should only be coins should only be rotated, should only be utilized for one other person, person, right? That, that's the ideal um, life, where you save up your love for one person. You use that love to formulate a sexual pleasure lifestyle, uh, and one that obviously continues throughout the next generation, right? Continues to build up the next generation. Um, but it usually starts here, right? Um, I don't, I don't like thinking that relationships start down there, right? Via visual aid, via just looking at someone like, wah, right? Um, you wanna love people based off of who they are, not what they look like, so to speak. Um, even though it's still two sides of the same coin, usually what you, um, physically look, uh, physically like to look at is also very rewarding in the love sense, right? Your, your body and mind and soul almost are in alignment at that, in that, at that rate. Not everybody's in alignment, not everybody has that alignment, not everybody can, you know, marry the first person they see, the first person they date, and, you know, live happily ever after with just, you know, one soulmate, a couple kids and a dog, right? Um, I think we're overpopulated. I'm just kidding. I don't really know that. I, 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 I prefer less. I maybe, in, in some cases, I'm a less is more. I don't, I, I, you know, you can't argue, you can't argue the population of yours, really. You just can't. It's not like you can just, there's no real reason to argue, because what are you gonna do if you think there's too many? What are you gonna do? Like, it's like pee in the ocean. You can't get rid of it. Like guns, you can't really get rid of them. It's just where we are. Now, I can think of my ideal. I can express my ideal. Um, and it, and, and yes, it is less people, but quite honestly, it's not necessarily about how many people there are. It's how we create and build the community of, of hu, the species, the community of humans into what we are today. There wouldn't be so much tragedy, so much turmoil if we didn't express ourselves as humans through, through such a base instinct with our sexual pleasures. Right? If sex wasn't a primary, um, force of energy, force of fuel for many people, then we wouldn't have so much, you know, like poverty. We wouldn't have so much crap. There wouldn't be so much turmoil. Um, for obvious reasons. Um, but sex isn't wrong. It should be very well-strategic, thought-out, utilized and, and, and dealt with properly. You know, we, we don't do that anymore. Um, I am, I'm, I'm, I'm still at a very egotistic, I'm very, um, I'm a very, I'm, I, I'm still very young um, in my, let's say, sexual desires or sexual, um, usage, right? I haven't really used, um, I can't say that either, you know? I, I, I have gotten out and I have done a thing or two. Um, and it's not like I've had even really, really, really close relationships, more or less. It's been an accident in, in a sense. Um, acting out of my impulses. Um, I, in, in, in one realm, I try and compare myself to the perfect relationship, the perfect man-woman relationship, and how they do feel the ability to um, express and connect and grow a family. Um, and what that looks like. And what that looks like. And compare it to. The obvious, um, single, single person lifestyle, man or woman. I don't know if. I guess I, I, I guess I could. Say what I believe in. Um, I think there's much more room for a man to live a single. Lifestyle than it is for a woman to live a single lifestyle. No judgment. And I still have room to kind of explore. The, the terminology that went into the Bible for this, but the Bible does say he creates man and then creates woman. It doesn't mean they're not equal at all. That doesn't mean they're not, you know. Able to sustain life in a different way, although it, it, it may. I don't know. I'm a guy. I'm, I'm, I have my own. I mean, I'm, I am a man, therefore my ego tells me that the man is the. Let's say, I don't wanna say stronger of the two, um. Of the two sexes, but. Yeah, I don't, I don't know enough about women to really put, put, put sense in this. Um, for me. To, to be alone for the rest of my life. You know, I've thought about this and I've definitely considered it, the mountaintop. The mountaintop scenario to me is still quite lovely. I'm very much attracted to it. I don't think it's very fulfilling or physically rewarding. However, I would express my life in a myriad of ways. Still be able to leave a legacy, right? Be able to write, be able to, um, read all day, write all day. And just be in, let's say, God's presence, be in the moment. Like a monk, right? Just like a monk, you know, just like a, 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 a. I don't wanna say disciple, but like a missionary or some sort of. You know, somebody's just out there doing their thing and then comes back every once in a while. I don't know. If that is, is, is my calling, right? I, I, I am attracted to that way of life. But I've also been cut off for most of my life, right? So when I say I'm attracted to something, when I think of myself being attracted to something. I almost have to take it with a grain of salt because. I, I've been under a lot of influential things in my life, a lot of. Experiences in my life have led me astray, so to think that I'm attracted to a version of something or someone, myself. I gotta consider where it's coming from. Um, and, 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 and when I do, let's say, when I do take on. An endogenous amount of drugs at one point and the thought of. Living on that mountaintop is so profoundly clear, of course, that's what I, all I wanna go to. Cause I could do that, right? Just live in the mountains and, and, and take dabs of DMT. Every month and just write books and read, like, that's cool. Like, that is all good. I'm, I'm good with that. Not so sure it's what God wants for me. Dang it. So to the meditation board. But yeah, plain and simple. Cause you know, thirty-five minutes in. It's very simple. It's very understanding, right? When it comes to this stuff, it does not look pretty. I understand that. It does not look good. Um, it doesn't look very inviting, so to speak. If, if, if I were to say that this was our exercise session for the day. Most would not, would not be interested, would not be intrigued. If, if I said that this was the warmup. This is how we get ready to go to the gym. This is our pre-workout, right? This is not a typical pre-workout, but yeah, this is absolutely a pre-workout. So, that being said, my visual. For what my future looks like in regard to following God. Living through, uh. Following God's will, living a, a purpose, Christ, purpose filled by Christ, you know. Living the godly work life. Does not look, um, very, uh, appealing to me at the moment, seeing as. It won't go without its fair share of difficulties, not just control, discipline. Not just with self-control and discipline, but with, um. Defending myself against attackers and that's kind of what I'm more so worried about. Discipline in the sexual sense doesn't sound that bad because. You know, it's still, it, it, you can still, I can still, I feel like it still utilize the sexual energy. But as long as I can maintain discipline and self-control. God's okay with that, but I'm actually able to get involved. With people that, get involved with people that I'm physically attracted to. You know, sexually attracted to, where, you know, the outside community might not find very. Attractive of a, to, of, 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 of living a Christ-filled purpose, you know, everyone's gonna see it as different. I, I haven't even mentioned this yet. The comparison is like. Men and women hanging out together, right? The, the saying is that men don't make. Women don't make friends to men, right? Men don't have women friends. Men don't have girlfriends. You're either. You're either. Seeking a relationship, right? You're actually seeking out a partnership. The man ends up seeking out a partnership with a woman or. Not at all, right? I understand. There's plenty of guys out there with friends that are girls. I would question yourself at a time or two. I, I don't wanna move to make you question yourself at all, like sexual questioning. Question why you find it. How, why you find it, and it's not even that bad, right? Cause I, if I were. Living my authentic version of myself, I would probably be surrounded with women all the time. Um, I would probably be involved with more female style, um. Activities, get involved with w- women conversations, right? I would just end up flocking towards the. Feminine. Lifestyle or what have you, right? This is where I have a dichotomy. This is where I have, I get a little lost because. I were doing that, excuse me. If I were doing that. I suppose the genuine authentic me would end up finding. The right woman for me, who may be a little bit more masculine in that sense, right? Who's, who's a little bit different. And can compliment me where I'm weak. So, yeah, I actually, I, I, I do feel that I will be in a relationship with a woman one day. Proper balance, per- perfect, perfect person for me. And potentially have a child. But I am. So far. So far from that. I surround myself with guys, why I become, I'm sexually attracted to them. Surround myself with masculinity because I am. Attracted to it. Uh, I surround myself with youth, young men. Because that energy, that youthful, lively, passionate. Energy is something that I'm very well much drawn to. Narcissistically, as I've mentioned before, it's kind of, I am attracted to versions of me. That I either have been, feel like, or feel like I want to become, right? And it's very much narcissistic in a way. I kind of feel like I'm attracted to a version of myself, whether that be in the past, present or future. Whatever that means. Anyway, um, where was I going? Yeah, so it's not the same when, when guys have. Guy friends and guys have friends that are females. So I think the dichotomy between me and the, and the, and the, and the straight world. Is, um, how, how we act in regards to the situation where guys. Get involved with a girl that they're. That they're, that they're interested in, how a guy acts with women that he's sexually interested in. Um, and seeking a partnership versus how a guy acts, a straight guy acts. Around women that he's not interested in, usually doesn't interact at all. Or I'm just, for, for, to throw it out to everybody. If you're already in a relationship, then yeah, you, you're probably, um. Talking with women and it's not a big deal. I'm talking about a specific class of gentlemen, single men. And, uh, single men seeking relationships, uh, and how we go about seeking our relationships. This is gonna be a long video. The difference between how a straight guy seeks out female, uh, uh, in- interactions. Whether attracted to or not attracted to versus how a, uh, homosexual or someone who seeks. Who, someone who sexually is interested in the same sex. And how they end up. Responding or how they end up going about creating relationships to. The same sex, whether attracted or not attracted. So that's where the dichotomy is. I feel that my future will be heavily involved with young men that I'm both attracted and not attracted to. In, in a very physically possibly intimate way. That is still hopefully. Christ-fueled, that is still hopefully God-driven, purpose-driven by God. Um, doesn't sound good, doesn't even sound good saying it, but. That's the calling I feel. So. Join me on this movement. Thankfully, I'm the only one going through this one today. Forty, forty-five minutes. It's gonna be a long video, but, uh, thankfully it's on my oh-so-glorious computer, so load faster on, onto YouTube. How that works is beyond me. It takes my phone sometimes days. Even a week or two to upload a video that is over an hour long. When I bring this computer to my other house, it uploads in about an hour. So. Take the good with the bad. Um, sadly, it is, it is what it is. I hope nobody watches these videos, even though this intro was actually pretty good. We're gonna go ahead and use that. This sucks. I've got these, I've got these lights literally beaming down at me, so. I don't know how I'm gonna see anything. I am wearing. Yeah. Do one of these. I was cold, but. Since I talk so much, my energy is moving now. That'll work. Yeah, so sexual energy, boom, right down there, right? Once I get it open, a lot of legs smacking. Um, this looks so funny. I look like I'm gonna film myself falling asleep. Don't worry. I got you coming. This is terrible. Look at how far this is. Um, and I, I haven't even apologized for the sound. I know the sound is absolutely horrendous. Yeah, alright.
My intention for today's session is to help you to let go of whatever it is that's holding you back. In any way in your life. Whatever is getting in the way of you living the most empowered, inspired and fulfilling life, what is it? So what I want you to do right now is take a moment and set, set an intention. What's holding you back that you're ready to let go of? What's no longer serving you that you're ready to say goodbye to today? Call it forward. And then say using your inner voice, I am ready to let go of this thing, whatever that thing is for you, fill in the blanks. And then feel what it feels like to just consider the possibility that today. Is the day that you can finally let this go, finally move on. Then with the next breath. Just release, let it go. And next I want you to set one more intention. What is it that you want to call more of into your life? What is it that you would like to manifest more of? More peace? Healthier relationships, more prosperity and abundance, new opportunities, new place to live, whatever it is. Take a moment and call it forward and say once again, using your inner voice, I'm ready for more of this. And see it, feel it, fill in the blanks. And then feel what it feels like once again to already have more of this desire. More of this intention in your life now, starting today, starting this moment. Then with the next exhale, just breathe and let it go. Take a few more deep breaths in through your nose and out through your mouth. Feel your body relax and settle. Head to toe. Bring all of your energy, all of your focus, all of your attention, just your breath. Fully relaxed, enjoying these last few moments of stillness. Enjoy the journey.
Let's go on for a ride.
I'll see you on the other side.
Rock on your seatbelts, yo!
Alright, on my count, we'll start with the technique. Three, two, one. Open your mouth nice and wide. Take a deep breath into your belly, then into the chest. Then exhale, just let it all go, just release. Two in, one out, super simple. You gotta find your own breath rhythm, whatever is comfortable for you right now for these first few songs. Don't worry about the speed, don't worry about the rate, just focus on taking nice, big, deep, full breaths. That's what gives you the medicine. Nice full breaths. As you breathe in, feel your diaphragm expand in the front and the sides. Into your back in every direction. Nice, big, deep breath into the belly, into the chest, relaxing and letting it all just go. Nice, full breaths. Make these first few breaths, this first song, nice, big, deep breaths. Two breaths in, one breath out, all through the mouth. Good. You should feel your belly and your chest expand on every breath. Nice, big, full bellies. Don't worry about those rock hard abs, just feel your belly expand on every single breath. Inhale and expand, relax and let go. That's all you gotta do. That's all you gotta worry about. If you don't feel an expansion in your belly, you're not breathing deep enough. Feel that expansion. Inhale and expand, relax and let go. On the exhale, just let go, let go. That's what we're here to do. We're here to let go. Inhale and expand, into the belly, into the chest, relaxing and letting go. My job is to push, guys. My job is to make sure you go deep. Make sure you get a proper taste of the medicine, a proper taste of this breath medicine, but you gotta work with me. I can't do this work for you. You gotta do it yourself. You might even feel a little bit of discomfort coming in already. You gotta push through. You have to want the change. You have to want a breakthrough. You gotta push through. There is no magic pill for transformation. No one is gonna pop into your life and fix you. You're gonna do it. Right here, right now, you're the healer, you're the captain. You're the one that's in control. Nice, big bellies, nice, big breath, singular focus. This is your time, nowhere else to be. Nothing to do, total focus on going deep. That's all you have to do right now, focus on your breath. Don't let your brain trick you into something. Don't let your mind get in the way. If you find that your mind is wandering. If you find that your mind is wandering, just pull it back to your breath, all in and out to the back. Everything worthwhile requires a little bit of discomfort, a little bit of self-discipline. Give it all you got right now for the next forty minutes. Do anything for forty minutes, just push. Nice, big, deep breaths, big, deep breaths, into the belly, full expansion, full diaphragmatic breath. Into the chest, relax and let it go. Don't overcomplicate it, take it, just do your best, nice, full breaths. This is the work, this is the medicine, you have no idea what could be on the other side of this. You have no idea how quickly transformation can come flooding in when you're ready for it. When you work for it, when you really want it. But you gotta really want it, every breath, a little bit deeper than you wanted before it. No one's gonna do the technique, but you can just focus on nice, big, deep breaths. That's the medicine, that's what's amongst the door. Feel your diaphragm expand. You gotta work that muscle, it's easier. Right now, your mind is probably pushing back, it doesn't wanna be uncomfortable. It doesn't wanna push, it wants to chill, it wants to relax. It's not the time, it's not the time. No work on the exhalated, just let it go, let it fall away, don't force it. Nice, big, deep breaths. Might be challenging, this might feel hard, if you're feeling resistance, you're creating that resistance. You gotta start creating the resistance in your body and your mind right now. It's just a choice. You can do this if you really want to, you've got this, or else you wouldn't be here. Each belly breath, little bit deeper, little bit fuller than the one before, but don't go so fast that you gas yourself out. Feel the expansion. No matter what, don't let your thoughts get in the way. But don't let your mind run away, tell you that you need to be doing this or that, focusing on other things. Just pull all of your awareness back to your breath if your mind wanders. Nice, big, deep breaths, if you're feeling resistance, own it. Don't let your mind get in the way, make stories, just breathe deep. Nice, full, big, deep belly breaths. Find that edge. Find that edge of discomfort, push just beyond it. Good. Usually we're out of creating resistance here at this point, you're probably creating resistance in a bunch of other places. If you want to break that cycle, then let's do it. Let's do it to get the right form for that right here, these next few songs. We're coming up on a few songs of intensity, this is an opportunity. Growth requires discomfort, you know that, we need to be willing to be comfortable with discomfort in order to grow, in order to expand, in order to evolve. This is how it works. Out of adversity we rise from ashes, seven times for stand-up, hey, guess what? You're winning. Breathe into that discomfort, breathe into that space, where is it uncomfortable in your body and your mind? Breathe into it. Masper said, "Do what is easy and your life will be hard, do what is hard and your life will become..." So we gotta show up, we gotta sign up, we gotta be willing to do the hard things. To be scared, to be afraid, to be uncomfortable. There's always big shifts on the other side of discomfort, always growth and transformation on the other side. If you feel like quitting already, remember the why that brought you here, tap into that motivation. What was your intention? How you show up today is how you show up in life. If you're half-assing it now, you're half-assing it in life guaranteed, so you have to push. You gotta show up, you gotta be ready, you gotta go all in. This is what this journey is about, we're going all in for the next forty minutes. Nice, big, deep breaths, into the belly, into the chest, just relax and let it all go. Let it go. Nice, big, full breaths, full expansion. How do you wanna show up in life? Decide right now, do you wanna show up as someone that goes fifty percent effort or someone who goes all in? Be all in or get all out, there is no halfway, this is easy compared to what you've been through in your life, push. Take a nice, full, big, deep breath, like you care, like you wanna do the work. Let's work. Into the belly, into the chest, full expansion, just relax and let go, breathe, feel, feel. You start showing up fully right here, right now, with each breath, then you're proving it to yourself, and you can start to show up fully in life, in all the areas of your life that you wanna show up. For your family, for your community, for your friends, for your children. This is your chance. Force on, now we're getting into it. Now we're doing the work, you've gotten through the gnarly shit in your life to be here. All sorts of stuff, challenging great guts, traumatic childhoods, tough financial times, chewed up and spit out at every turn, and you can't breathe like a madman for the five minutes, come on. Two breaths in, one breath out. Just breathe for a breath, nothing else. Nice, big, full, deep belly breaths. Full expansion, full diaphragmatic breathing. Push. Here we go, go a little bit deeper, a little bit further if you can. Like if you really wanna go for a little bit faster, too. If you wanna make a permanent change, stop focusing on the size of your problems and start focusing on the size of you. Nice, big, full breaths. Finding a nice rhythm, now we're well on our way. Nice, big, full, deep breaths. Tough times don't last long, you know what lasts tough people? Just the fact that your fear means that you're working on yourself, you're showing up in yourself when most people aren't. This is not an easy time to be alive, people are challenged at every turn. How are you gonna face those challenges? How are you going to rise up and meet life? With strength, with courage, with determination. Show up right now in this moment, make this moment. Showing up and doing the hard work in face of adversity, this is what it's all about.
Come on, God! I can't penetrate, man, I'm so weak, so weak! Break out.
You've made it this far, you've made it through the hardest part already, it doesn't mean it's gonna be easy, but you're in a flow now. It's time to enter into the subconscious mind. Alright, it's time to get real. It's time to go deep, this is...
I'm not even real right now!
This is the moment to do the big work, breathe.
I'm not even in pain, I can't even break down. Can't even feel anxious. I guess I talked about plenty already.
You ready to make a change? Then you have to know that you are bigger than the things that have happened to you in your life. It's time to make it all okay. What is it that you're holding on to that's causing you pain? That's causing you suffering, that's causing you stress, anxiety, distress, anger, resentment, fear? What is it that you're holding on to that you just know deep down inside is not serving you, but you just can't seem to let it go? Whatever it is for you, bring it to the surface, because right here, right now, we're gonna make it all okay. Maybe it's family drama, maybe it's some childhood trauma, financial struggles, an ex-partner that lied to you, that did you wrong, broke your heart. Maybe someone betrayed your trust, left you hanging out to dry, you didn't have your back when you needed them most. Maybe it's your own self-judgment, your own guilt, your own shame, whatever it is, call it to the surface right now. No more denying it, no more pretending that it doesn't exist, no more faking that you're okay when you're dying on the inside. No more letting this thing lead away every day after day, week after week, year after year. It's time to see it, see the stories that you cast around you, see how you've made it bigger, better, and uglier than it really is. See it without judgment, without fear, just see it, feel it, if it hurts, let it hurt. Ruby said, "Why stay in the cage when the door has always been open?" Well, right here, right now, it's time to walk right through that door, just for this moment. Not for tomorrow, not for next year, not five years from now, just this singular moment. Just with this next breath, we're gonna make it all okay, because guess what? If you could make it okay just for one single moment, you can make it okay for the rest of your life, because this moment is all we ever have, just this one single moment. Are you ready to let it all go? Are you ready to be liberated from this cycle, to be removed from the shackles? Remember, this isn't just about you, we're healing generational trauma. Do it for your children, your children's children, your family, your community, for humanity, are you ready? Okay, then let's do it, on my count, we're gonna take one big, deep breath in, and we're gonna hold our breath at the top and let our massive scream all together. Are you ready? Here we go, three, two, one, big in-breath, all the way, squeeze your core and hold. Feel all that energy coursing through your body, feel it all the way, deep down into your core, deep into your center, feel it. And when we let go, we're gonna let out this big scream, and this is the moment of big release, this is the moment that you're... This is the moment that you're gonna let it all go. All the pain, all the trauma, all the anger, all the resentment, the struggle, the fear, all the things that you can and can't see, all of it. Are you ready? Scream! Good. Come back. Come back to your breath. Come back to the technique. Deep into your belly, deep into the chest. Let it fall away, relax and let go. We're not done yet. Come right back to your breath. One, deep into the belly, deep into the chest, full expansion. Fall into the diaphragm. Let it go. I told you. We came here to do big work. Just breathe. Now you should be into a nice flow at this point. Theta brainwaves, stay unlocked. Subconscious door unlocked. It's time to walk through. It's time to walk through that door to reprogram your limiting beliefs. Reset the cycles of self-sabotage. Self-judgment, monkey mind going crazy. Reset. Big, deep breaths. Nice, big, full, deep breaths. You want the medicine of change and transformation? You wanna take advantage of every ounce of this session? Prove it.
Holy cow, I'm sweating.
What you're gonna learn today is your breath can get you through the most challenging-
She's doing me?
If you let it. A mess of crap that you've pulled onto shit for way too long. Stuff is going to come up. It's inevitable. It's life. Challenges are not part of the path. They are the path. It's time to retrain how we deal and cope with the struggle. You need to learn how to let it hurt. It's okay to feel. Feel it. If it hurts, then let it hurt. If it bleeds, then let it bleed. Then when you do, let it out and let it go. All pain, all suffering, all traumatic events are gifts wrapped in transformation. You just have to keep walking past to give them. Breathe. Any disappointment, any heartache, fear, regret, judgment, all of it. Yes, you've been through some challenging shit in your life. We all have. But here's the secret that will shift your perception forever. Let this register deep within your subconscious mind. Life is not happening to you. Life is happening by you, for you, and through you. All those things that happened in the past needed to happen on some level so you could have that experience. Learn that lesson. Fight that demon in order to come out the other side stronger, wiser, more courageous, more resilient. These moments are gifts. Adversity is preparation for greatness. You created it. By you, for you. Radical self-responsibility. Breathe. Joseph Campbell said, "Opportunities to find deeper powers within ourselves come when life seems most challenging." Are you struggling? Do you hurt? Are you afraid, scared? Beat down at your waist end to your breaking point? Good. You are on your personal road to greatness. Here's your mantra. Look how far you've come and you are still here. Let that sink in.
I need to play this video during anxiety moments. Definitely. I don't feel any right now, so I'm not going too deep.
We have to stop waiting for life to get easier. We have to put in the work to get stronger and-
I was gonna laugh, I'm gonna laugh.
Life throws at you, you're unbelievable, unshakable, anti-french, resilient, strong as fuck. Breathe.
These are just for entertainment.
We get so caught up in the trivial aspects of the human experience, it weighs us down, chews us up, spits us out. Marcus Aurelius said, "You don't have to turn this into something. It doesn't have to upset you." Life is a raging ocean with one-hundred-foot waves. The storm is coming. Do you want to be the sailboat that gets knocked around or do you want to be the shipping freighter? Even in the biggest storms, that thing barely moves. Your blade out and your spear was designed to be resilient, indestructible. Pain, pain is inevitable. Suffering is optional. Sometimes the only way around suffering is to go straight through it. The world is full of suffering, but it's also full of people overcoming it. You've proven that by being here in this session. Breathe. This could be the moment. This breath, this class. This day can change your life if you let it. But you have to really want it. You have to really want change. You have to have a deep desire for transformation. If your life isn't where you want it to be, if you're not happy in your relationship, at your job, in the location you're in, whatever your circumstance is, maybe, then maybe it's time. It's time to change it. Maybe it's time to put in the work, to put in the extra effort, to get super clear on what it is that you want to create for your life. That you feel would bring you more joy, more love, more prosperity, more connection, healthier relationships, more fulfillment, whatever it is. What is it for you? What are you here to do? What are you here to create? Whatever it is, breathe into it now. And know, deep down in your heart, you are still capable of achieving greatness. That you are worthy. That you are ready. Ready to be fully seen. Ready to be fully heard. Ready to feel alive and feel free and to feel fully used. How bad do you want it? It all starts with pushing your vision. Not your parents' vision, not your teacher's vision, your vision. Get crystal clear on what it is that you want. What's your deepest desire? What do you yearn for? What is your dream? If you don't know where you want to go, then you will never know if you're making and moving in the right direction. Make the decision right now. Deep within the chambers of your own subconscious mind that you are going to start-
Oh, shoot. I thought we were plugged in. This is where it hurts. I am plugged in. I thought I was plugged in. Oh no. My power isn't even on. Don't worry, we're doing okay. I'm surprised I actually left from there pretty quickly. But I'm feeling good. My body is pretty well awake. Realizing I could really use a hand. Here. Here. I need a guide pretty soon.
What do you want? What do you desire? What did you want when you were younger? If you wanted for your life, there's somewhere along the way you came along when it got challenging here.
Hey, this is a bruise!
Maybe it's time to start making some big changes. This song is called "Forgive", and that's exactly what we're gonna do. Keep taking those nice, big, deep breaths. Just two more songs of intensity. Don't let up now. Big into the belly, big into the chest, and just let it go. Here we go.
Yeah, right there, see? That's what you wanna see.
It's time to forgive yourself for the bad decisions, for the so-called mistakes, for the choices you made that didn't work out. The ones that ended up hurting you or others. It's time to forgive yourself for not knowing what you didn't know before you learned and grew from it. Forgive yourself for being young and reckless for shooting from the air. From that heart you broke and that emotion you triggered. You are learning and you are learning to forgive yourself. Whatever it is. But before we break down, let me go, let's give this self-forgiveness a partner. Who in your life is it that you need to forgive? Maybe it's your mother for abandoning you. Maybe it's your father for abusing you. Your brother or sister for not being there for you. An ex-partner for cheating on you. For breaking your heart and old friend for turning their back on you. Holding on to resentment is like holding on to our breath. You might be fine for a minute or two, but sooner or later, you're going to suffocate. They say caring resentment is like drinking poison and expecting the other person to get sick. So let's do this right now. Let's pour out the poison.
Oh, I did the chest. I did it. I did chest yesterday. At least I'm doing it. At least I'm doing whatchamacallit, right?
Jonathan Hughes said, "Forgive others not because they deserve forgiveness, but because you..."
I kinda went a little self-guided there for a minute. As you saw. A little bit more like. Yeah, so I went a little bit self-guided there for a little bit. Yeah, so I went a little bit self-guided there for a little bit. It's really bright. Off the script, so to speak. Um, I, I mean, I've, I've been doing breath work for a while. I, I've definitely developed my own, theories, I suppose. And I'm not, I'm not, um, an expert. I'm not even an intermediate, really. I, I don't really know what to classify myself as, but I suppose I'm an intermediate when it comes to just studying health and studying wellness and the, and the, and, and, and the body's ability to overcome and adapt and grow. And I've been working with my body for quite some time, you know, maybe in particular, maybe focused on it for the past 15 years. And the breath work, maybe for the past 10 or so years, maybe eight to 10 years, I've been kind of focused on what the breath, how, how the breath can guide you, how the breath can guide myself through exercise or through training, through therapy, so to speak. Um, so all that you saw there, all the tapping, all the, all the self-abuse, it's not, it's not in any way, um, you know, obviously a bad thing. It's really breaking up tension, breaking up muscular, um, you know, imbalances, uh, breaking up that, that, that tightness, right? The body has. The body naturally builds up. There's no such thing as a perfect body, so there's an imbalance between tightness and weakness in the body, all over the body. You know, so your biceps are tight, your triceps are probably weak, you know, vice versa. That's a bad example, actually. But it's a good one. It, it's enough. It's enough to, you know, if your, if your, if your chest is, is tight. Or technically, for, like, my chest is weak, so my back is often tends to be tight. Yeah, I'm gonna massage the back and train the chest. Or vice versa. I'm pretty sure. See, I'm pretty sure that's it. Anyway, I, I gotta go to the bathroom, so I gotta, I gotta run. I could just pause this, but I'm just gonna leave it at an hour and a half. Hopefully, hopefully you guys enjoyed that video. Thank you for watching all the way to the end if you did. And yeah, shout out. So I don't even think I've done a shout out to Yogi Labs yet, but Finley? I, I don't think it's Chris Finley. Um, Fin, uh, he's one of the co-founders of this specific breath work slash meditation, guided meditation. Um, and they have an entire practice. They've got counseling. They have, um, uh, like, weekend events, like, like, uh, like, um, like the, oh my gosh, like the strength camps, like the grounding camps that I used to go to. They have their own camps, uh, weekend excursions where people can go to and, and kind of do like an, an immersive, uh, event. Um, where you just, you just break down your whole body, you know, you get, you get the nitty-gritty, the peasy gets with counseling, with, um, leaders there, with guided people, guided leaders. And I would love, I would love nothing more than to be a part of that sort of style, at least that version. That's like one step. Breath work is just one step of the process for me. I also want to be training balls-to-the-walls people in the gym. I also want to do massotherapy, right? I also want to do, um, verbal, verbal therapy. You know, I don't just wanna be physical. I want so many things. I want, I have so many visions. It just, it just doesn't look very good from a Christian perspective. So I want to be careful as to how I go about approaching this style of work. Um, there is rehabilitation to be had here. Um, there is sexual energy that can be utilized for good and quite possibly changed. Um, I do think that you can change your, your sexuality. I think you can change who and what you are attracted to. I think it changes all the time. Quite honestly, not, may, maybe not, you know, so much so that you're changing, you know, sexes, preferences on sexes. But your preferences, you know, the, the things that you might be, uh, 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 attracted to could definitely change over time. And if that can change, then I do believe it's possible to change your actual, um, I'm gonna say gender orientation. So what you are attracted to. I know the words are still confusing. I was gonna say sexual orientation. But to me, that sounds like sexual orientation, male or female. What, what are you? Male or are you female? What sex are you? Male or female? What orientation are you? Gender orientation, to me, is just essentially what I'm starting as, what you're attracted to. I mean, that could be anything. It could be anything in the world. Doesn't have to be specifically male or female. You could be, nevermind, nevermind, just nevermind. You'd be attracted to anything. However, I don't know if we're all born with the purpose of sexual reproduction, leaving off, leaving a bit of, leaving a, having kids. I don't think we're all meant to have kids. I honestly don't know what the life looks like for, for the group of people, the larger group of people. I think only a select few people should really have kids to make it really well, to make sure that all the kids, you know, turn out really well and are raised properly and have, you know, appropriate parents that don't get divorced and blah, blah, blah. I think there should be very few parents. I think parenthood is definitely by far hands-down the most difficult role, ha, by far, most difficult role. There's no level of leadership. There's no level of, you know, there's no pastor, there's no preacher, there's no sermon, there's no disciple, you know? I mean, Jesus had it hard. I get that. Jesus had it hard. But you know what they compare birthing pains to? You know what a scientist, compared doctors, compare birthing pains to? Guess this one. Amputation. Amputation, right? Cut off a fucking finger, cut off an arm. That's what it feels like to have a baby. Do you want that? Men? I don't know how closely related it, I don't know if it's actually true, um, you know, how, what, how, what level of truth that has, um, but I, I, I lo, I'll think about that. And I will think, um, yeah, not for me, you know, I will bow to the ladies and say, "Thank you for your time here on earth. Thank you for putting up with that level of, um, perseverance and sacrifice." Do not worry about much more. Don't worry, I'll take care of whatever I can, right? Hopefully, all you wanna do is love the child, right? Because golly, uh, if loving a child has anything to do with loving the self, um, you probably shouldn't be a parent. But anyway, you know, both, you know, men and women can, can, can make good parents, you know, make good, uh, loving, caring, kind. I wanna, I wanna put this on the point where, you know, not all women have to be the stay-at-home and not all men have to be the workers. That's how I was raised, but I don't know, I don't know if that's biblical or not. Like, love is biblical. Whether the child sees it from their mother or their father, I, I, I don't think it matters. I think it's definitely a 50/50. I definitely like the idea that the men and woman are, are, are equal on, on, on most playing fields. I don't really see where marriage does have a separation, or at least I'm trying to see the other version, right? So I was raised, I was raised religiously to think that the woman raises the children and the men go out and work and provide, right? Nourish and provision, um, nourishment and provision, right? Man of action, woman of love, or woman of caring, like caring versus action, huh? Um, anyway, but I think they, the, I, I don't want the roles to be switched completely, but I don't want there to be roles either. I wanna find a way where there is a middle ground. Um, and I want it to be based purely off the Bible, obviously. I don't know why I'm even talking about this. I don't plan on being a parent anytime soon. I've got a long way to go. I don't like celibacy. However, there is, there is growth to be had through sexual stimulation, through, yes, stimulating your sex organs, stimulating testosterone. There's a way, like, I, it often, i- i- it baffles me and blows my mind to think that Spartans, old-time, um, gladiators, people in ancient times, warriors in ancient times, would often do it. They would do it, right? They would have sex to promote testo, to invigorate. I don't know of how much, I don't wanna say truth. I know it's true, but how far it goes. So to me, um, you're not necessarily supposed to release the seed in order to boost your testosterone. Getting into acts of sexual, um, intimacy, sexual, i- i- if you're physically aroused, if you're actually aroused, um, science, scientists prove me if I'm wrong, but you're building up your sexual energy. Like, that's getting your testosterone moving and it's releasing testosterone. Now, if you don't release your seed, I think that gets saved, that energy does get saved. You can be completely celibate and not, you know, completely get, completely cut off the need to, or, yeah, the desire to, um, be aroused, right? But I don't know if that's, it sounds damaging. I actually think it's somewhat physically damaging to your hormonal level. Um, I'm not gonna say it's not spiritually helpful. I'm not gonna say that it's not, you know, mentally, um, worthwhile. But I, I do think that it might be, um, physically damaging if you don't utilize that part of your body, you know? Utilize that energy, however, however much energy you, you feel that you have. So yeah, I'm gonna go in a little bit of a different direction these days. Gonna try and experiment in ways that I can actually utilize my sexual energy. Hopefully, this isn't getting too deep for anybody. Come at me, bros. Step off my game. I will challenge anyone. I love homophobes. I think they're the greatest people. Because they are so weak, like it's the most beta male action to perform. It's, it's so beta. I don't know where that came from. Anyway, I'm gonna, I'm gonna step out of here. I love you all. Thank you for watching me for following. Be aroused expressively, folks. That's completely new. Let's just stick with live expressively for now. Yeah, live expressively. Peace.